For the record, we are live captioning our meeting this evening. So please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. Also for the record, I'm going to call Raul and I'll start with our student trustee, Mr. Burnett.
President.
Thank you. Ms. Bitter Smith?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Butler?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Norene?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Smith? Dr. Thor?
Present.
Thank you. We have six board members and one student trustee present for this meeting this evening. This is a work session for our budget for fiscal year 2024. And to present this evening, we have Ms. Grunio. So, Dr. Gonzalez, I'm going to ask you to introduce our presenter, please.
Good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board, members of CEC, faculty, staff administration are with us this evening here and in the virtual world, we welcome you. And we continue our progress towards the creation and adoption of a budget for fiscal year 2024. So I believe this is number four work session, Ms. Grunio. She's been having so much fun, she lost count. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to her, President Sullivan.
Thank you so much, Dr. Gonzalez. President Sullivan, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the board, members of CEC, other colleagues and guests. I am Kim Grunio and I'm the Vice Chancellor for Business Services and happy to provide the latest update on the 2024 budget. We'll go through next steps at the end, so I'll save my song and dance for April and May sessions when we get there. I do have a song choice for today and Mrs. Sullivan will be happy you didn't even have to ask me or prompt me about it.
Yay.
And I'll share with you, I thought about it this morning as I was driving in, the first song that popped into my head and I decided to go with it is "We Are Family" and I'm trying really hard to not sing that because I can't hear it in my head and not sing it.
Okay, just the first few words.
Oh, no, you don't want me to sing, ever. And I think the reason why that popped into my head is because, you know, and I've been, I think banging this drum for about the last year that our budget situation is what it is and we are all in this together. And how I look at it is, just as a family, there are going to be things that within our family we agree on and things that we disagree on. And there might be a squabble here or a squabble there, but at the end of the day, we will all come together and do what is best for our family. So that's kind of how I look at going into today's presentation. And some of that might make a little bit more sense when I tell you what I've been doing for the last date as well at the Capitol. So it's been an interesting few days. So with that, we'll go to the next slide, please, Elsa, or actually, we need to bring this slide presentation up. So the agenda for the work session today is in front of you. The first thing we're going to do is an update on the status of Maricopa's compliance with the expenditure limit and what we think the future looks like in that same vein. Then we'll take a look at any updates to summaries by fund with more details on a few and then we'll wrap up the presentation with the next steps for the 24 budget because we are starting to come to a close. So with that, we'll go to the next slide and just launch right into the expenditure limit discussion and, thank you Elsa. Yeah, part of that slide is missing, so, no. So I want to share that, so we're starting this present, we're starting this looking at Maricopa's expenditure limit carry forward. We started looking at it last spring primarily because it illustrates the challenge we have to operate within the current expenditure limit. So for this chart, we have updated it to include what the draft of the 2022 report looks like. And again, this is the the carry forward, the expenditure limit carry forward, not to be confused with fund balance or fund balance carry forward. But within the expenditure limit, we are able to carry forward some capacity when we have revenues that come in that are excludable such as tuition and fees, but we don't spend them in a given year. So over the last many, many, many years, Maricopa has banked expenditure limit carry forward, if you will. So this is a picture of that. And so this picture goes back to 2017. Across the very top line, you can see we had $418 million across all funds of expenditure limit carry forward. So if we drop down to the draft report for fiscal '22, you'll see that we're down to $226 million of carry forward. And for fiscal '22, we did use, we did take advantage of the reduced penalty that was passed by the legislature for fiscal '22. We also have that in place for fiscal '23. And so technically, we exceed our expenditure limit in fiscal '22 by about $55 million and we will pay a $20,000 penalty in which to be able to do that. And that allows us to not then have to use $55 million of carry forward to keep ourselves under the limit. In doing that, we'd still use $32 million of carry forward to stay under the limit for fiscal '22. So as we go forward and we use those thoughts going forward, we can see that in '23, based on the same information or very similar information, the ability to have a reduced penalty in '23 as well. We will still drop our carry forward across all funds to 167 million. By the time we get to 64, or I'm sorry, by the time we get to 2024, we'll have about 78, almost 79 million dollars of carry forward left. So if we use about $80 million of carry forward or an estimated amount of $80 million of carry forward every year in '25, we will exceed the limit by even 2 million, up to $10 million. And we'll talk about penalty in a minute because I have a slide on that as well, what the actual penalty is per statute. So that then hopefully paints a little bit of a picture of where we are regarding the expenditure limit. So then if we go to the next slide, this one shows us what the calculated penalty is without the reduced penalty legislation that has been put in place again for fiscal '22 and fiscal '23 at this point in time. So less than 5% of the limit is an equal amount of state aid. So again, if we exceed our expenditure limit in fiscal '25 by $10 million, the penalty is $10 million. Not one-tenth of that, it's $10 million. If we exceed it by more than 5%, but less than 10%, it's three times the amount of the expenditures and anything over 10% is five times the amount of expenditures with which we exceed the expenditure limit. One of the key pieces of this is the statute states that the penalty is of state aid. So Maricopa does not receive state aid. I will share with you, some years ago, when state aid was completely pulled, there were some people who said, yay, we don't have to comply with the expenditure limit anymore. Well, it's not really the case. We don't know what the penalty, where, I should say, where the penalty is going to come from. There was some sense that it could come from STEM funds now that we're back in the STEM funding formula. I will say, based on the conversation we had at the Capitol yesterday, that's not likely to be true because state aid and STEM funds are in two different places of the budget. And I'm sorry if I get some of these terms wrong. I'm learning a lot, that's always good. But so we don't think that's really where it's going to come from, but there's still a question of where is it going to come from? And the point that was made and I think cannot be lost is that it's still a violation of the Constitution. So there could be civil penalties that are implied, replied. It's really a path I don't think we want to go down. I don't think it's a fight we want to fight because that is going to be an expensive fight as well. So my efforts will always be around, how do we stay within the expenditure limit within the tools we have available to us? So with that, then, we can go to the next slide. And so I also want to share what some of the options we have available to us. We do have internal options and external options. And this slide talks about the external options. We do still have legislation pending for extending the reduced penalty for fiscal year '24. We would like it for fiscal year '25. Some folks think we should come back every year and ask for this. So if we get it passed at all, it will likely be '24 alone. And we are having meetings with key legislators to maintain the exposure of the need. I will share, we had six meetings yesterday. It is with, is myself and it is our Government Relations Director as well as two lobbyists that we have as well. And we've got crack team, you guys. I think it's going well, if I can say so. I will say, I went home last night and was exhausted and my son says, you had to say that six times. I said, I had to say that six times. So it's been interesting. And I was telling somebody else, I have to mind my Ps and Qs, so that makes it very challenging for me at times. I will share also, so we have, I think, two to three more sessions that are set up and we had one last week as well. So I think we're trying to get everywhere we can to get our need for this type of relief heard. AC4, which is Arizona Community College Coordinating Council, so it's all of the CEOs of the Arizona districts. We met with, the CEOs and CBOs held a three-hour meeting, that was also challenging, last Thursday to strategize about some statewide options that we think we might have, which is to try to get potentially a ballot to the statewide voters in November of '24. And that would be either through legislative referral or by initiative. We're working through those options. I think they're going to be challenging to figure out what a one-size-fits-all solution is for all of our districts because our issues are a little bit different in each case. And each scenario we talk about and talk through has the ability to help a couple of districts or a few districts, but then actually can really harm other districts. And as much as I want to preserve Maricopa's ability to proceed as we are, I don't want to advocate for something that I know is going to decimate one of our sister districts. That doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. So those conversations are happening. And then in addition to that, Maricopa is exploring options available to us as a system as well. And so I expect or believe that in the coming months, we'll know a little bit more about what those options and opportunities are and what the direction that Maricopa will choose to take. So with that also, we can go to the next slide and talk about some internal options that we have available to us. So the expenditure limit is all about setting what, exactly what those words say, setting your limited expenditures or limiting the expenditures you have available to you. So as you all know, over the last couple of years and coming couple of years, we've been reducing budgets. And so we're, we'll be up to 3.5% with the adoption of the 2024 budget. We have another 1% that is slated for '25. We could always reduce expenditures by more than that. The colleges and the district office divisions are working on their reductions now for fiscal '24 and planning for '25. Over the years, you know, we cut vacant positions first, positions that we haven't filled and maybe don't need to fill. We then, I'm quite sure, will move into the reign of when a position becomes vacant, you really question whether or not you need to fill it or if it's one that you can reduce. Ultimately, what we really would like to avoid doing is actually having to cut filled positions, which if we have to reduce our budgets more than a percent over the next couple of years, I think we start moving into that territory. I will share, I don't think we've done a ton of exploration in that space, mostly because we really don't want to have to go there. But certainly, if that's where we end up having to go, it is where we will have to go because there's certain things that will be more challenging for us. We can also increase excludable revenues, which you all have taken steps to do that in December, starting for fiscal '24 with the tuition increase. Of course, increasing enrollment helps in both of those places with the expenditure limit and how it is calculated in addition to the tuition revenue that comes in. All of those efforts are underway, as you all are very well aware, in the enrollment space for all kinds of reasons, not just for this particular reason. So that work is in process. And then another option we have available is to look at shifting applicable operational revenues to other excludable revenues such as Prop 207, potentially STEM dollars. This is not an option we necessarily want to employ either. However, we will look at it as '24 goes on and as we figure out if we do get some legislative relief or what direction we end up going on. So this is really an option that is on the table, but we will look at it as we go through and it won't be our first option, I don't think. So with that, then, we can go to the next slide, please, Elsa. And so now after I set that beautiful stage of expenditure limit conversation, which is a fun conversation every time we have it, I assure you, we're going to move then truly into the the view of the 2024 budget, which will be before you for next read next month. And so this is a slide that you all have seen over the the last year plus. There are no changes in this slide from February. So I, just so that you all know, there are some slides that are copied over from February's meeting and that I wanted to make sure stayed in so that you have them for comparative purposes. And I do have a note at the bottom of each of those, if there are no changes from the February presentation, just so that you don't have to compare back and forth if you don't really want to. And I don't want you to have to do that. So one of the things that's in here that I had shared with you last month that I was hoping we'd be able to update are the TBDs in the revenue section under tuition. So we really got to a place over the last month where we're not at a place yet where we can make those recommendations just yet. We still want to leave the door open for some sort of a plan with differential tuition for fiscal '25. So that is something we'll work on on the coming months and then bring back to you all as we start the fiscal year '25 budget development work. So I had just, I had said last month, I was hoping to have those updated for you this month, so I want to own the fact that they're not updated yet because I just don't feel like it's appropriate just to plug a number in there without having a thesis for it. So we'd really like to have good numbers with which to work with. So with that also, we can go to the next slide, please. And so as always, we'll start with the general fund and the sources. And there are no changes to this slide either, so we'll move on to the next slide. And then for expenditures, there are no changes on this one either, but I do have a couple of clarifications that I would like to make. And I actually can't read my printing, so I put my glasses on. So on the the next slide, but don't shift slides yet, Elsa, we'll talk about the implementation of the 1% reduction. But I wanted to share that there were questions raised at the February meeting regarding the marketing budget, about what the marketing budget is and how it compares to other institutions of our similar size. I want to share that we are pulling that information together, but we don't have it available to share yet. But I will say that with the 1.4 million of additional funding that is proposed in the '24 budget, it does bring the adopted budget for central advertising to $5 million. And that was the target that was set a couple of years ago. So with this, with the '24 budget, we do achieve that goal. Now whether or not that goal needs to be revisited is a different conversation, but we've added dollars to that budget in both '23 and '24 to get to that $5 million range. So I assure you, we will have that other information to you as soon as we can get the information together and get it out to you all. Additionally, I'd like to make one clarification. Last month, we talked a bit about the months of expenditures covered by fund balance. And we talked about the fact that the 114 million of financial stability and operating reserves of 16% equates to about two months of expenditures. So one thing we we didn't talk about and I realized that I need to also share is that if you look at the the designations of fund balance, so the system-wide strategic efforts, the college carry forward and the uncommitted fund balance, which is about $76 million of fund balance, that actually is another 1.3 million, or I'm sorry, 1.3 months of expenditures, which then brings us to 3.3 months of expenditures, which I think is a little better than the two months. And the reason why I thought I I needed to point that out and should share that is because those committed lines are committed internally. Nobody has told us that that's where our fund balance needs to be spent. Those are designations we put in place. And if we're getting to the point talking about whether or not we're financially stable, we can take those designations away and that could become 3.3 months of expenditure. So I wanted to make sure I pointed that out as well. So with that, then, we can go to the next slide, Elsa. And this will talk about the 1% budget reduction for fiscal '24. This is a recommendation from ABC that has been made to the chancellor. So the total amount of the reduction at the 1% is just under $7.4 million. And that general fund reduction will be shared equally by the colleges, the district office divisions, as well as the district-wide business unit. However, it was recommended to not implement the 1% reduction evenly across all of the colleges. And with that also, we can go to the next slide. And this will show the distribution of the, that 1% total reduction across the colleges. So we have, with this approach, seven colleges receive a larger reduction of 1.8%. One college's budget is reduced by 1% and two colleges actually receive an increase of just over 2%. This recommendation, rather than a 1% across-the-board reduction, is made to begin to address the disparate funding currently in place for two of our colleges. And so I think over the, especially the past year, we've talked about how we need to start working towards a new economic model of allocating our budget. This is likely to be the direction that we will end up starting to move into and this is somewhat of an interim step ahead of having that budget model in place. So with that, then, Elsa, we can go to the next slide and we can look at the auxiliary fund. These are very similar figures to the February work session. There are minor updates which reflect continued refinement of estimates and projections and primarily reflect a small anticipated growth in tuition and fees and grants and contracts. A lot of what we do when we build like the auxiliary fund budget as well as the restricted fund budget is we look at historical information and then reach out to the areas that are impacted by those activities and ask if there's anything new, anything coming down the pike, especially in the restricted fund. Are there any new grants, large grants that you are intending to apply for? And then we can build that into the budget as well. But otherwise, when it comes to auxiliary and restricted fund, if it comes in, it can go out. So we're trying to project and predict what might come in. So it's a little bit different than the general fund, which is really based so much on student enrollment and these funds are not. So I was sharing with somebody earlier, I said the the budget piece, especially these funds, are a little bit of science and a little bit of art rolled into one to try to predict what we think the next year might look like, at least months in advance. So with that also, we can go to the next slide and look at the restricted fund. There are, again, minor changes in this slide as well from February. I do however, want to point out that the grants and contracts line, so the top line there of 38.3 million proposed for fiscal '24 does include about $1.5 million in grants that are anticipated from or passed through the Maricopa Foundation. So Mrs. Smith, you had asked a question last, I almost said last week, last month. I think really about where the foundation fits into the slides that you were seeing. And so we'll talk about scholarships in a minute, but this really is about the grant side of it and the fact that if the foundation receives a grant that ultimately will be spent by Maricopa, it then goes from the foundation to us, gets accepted by you all if it meets the thresholds and then that becomes part of our budget. Anything that the foundation receives and spends on its own is their own budget and not part of Maricopa's budget. With that also, we can go to the next slide. And so, Mrs. Smith, based on your question, we added this slide in to provide a little bit more detail on the scholarship space. So the the line item on the previous slide is the total for LEAP, which is leveraging educational assistance partnership funding, which is financial aid and scholarships. And so we split those two out. And so you can see on this slide that scholarships that come through the foundation at, for fiscal '24 is expected to be around 3.3 million. And then we have other external scholarships at about a $3 million rate and that can be from a a private individual that donates directly to a college or to the district and doesn't go through the foundation. There's all different kinds of donors that can be in that external scholarship bucket. Aside from this, kind of to the point I was making earlier, the Maricopa Foundation does also provide scholarships directly to students, which are not included in our budget. And so for '23 to date, for fiscal year '23 to date, direct payments to students is about $1.5 million and direct payments to colleges on behalf of students is about $250,000. And the easiest way to look at that is years ago, when we were no longer able to provide any kind of assistance at all to undocumented students, the foundation changed their process so that if there was a donor that was not specific or a donor that specifically wanted to allow their dollars to go to undocumented students, what would happen is a student go to the college and enroll. The foundation gets the bill, the foundation writes a check to that college on their behalf. So it's the same as if grandma went and paid for grandson to, you know, for their tuition. So it works that way to keep it out of Maricopa's books and to keep everything legal for us and still provide support to students that we really wanted to. So with that, then, we can go to the next slide. And this is a look at Prop 301. And there are minor updates again to revenues and expenses based on more current information. Dr. Thor, you had asked a couple of questions about what the timeframe is for funding for the Phoenix College IT Institute as well as EMCOR. And for Phoenix College IT Institute, they were granted, I'm sorry, they were granted permanent funding, I almost said permission, granted permanent funding in fiscal '20. However, this support was moved back to or to Prop 301 in the fiscal '22 budget. I can't necessarily answer why, I just know from the Budget Office that is the direction that they received. But what I will say is I imagine that this type of support should and probably will be included in discussions regarding a new budget allocation approach versus these one-off activities that we're funding out of 301 or other types of funding sources. If that has become part of the college's core business, it should be included in all of the conversations. Regarding EMCOR Corporate College, it obviously has been in place for several years and it is expected to continue. EMCOR does generate auxiliary fund revenue from its work. It also though generates credit enrollment, which is recorded at the colleges. There have been many conversations over the years about the value of EMCOR to Maricopa. And I would suggest that maybe we should consider a work session in the future on workforce programs along with EMCOR, their work and their purpose and what they provide back to Maricopa that isn't a recorded revenue in the auxiliary fund. So at this point in time, there there isn't a plan to not continue to fund EMCOR's operations through Prop 301, but that is also something that the Workforce Funding Council will take under consideration as we go through the funding cycles. And with that, we can go to the next slide, which is Prop 207. And there are no changes from February's presentation, so I don't really need to say anything about this slide. We're all happy about. The next group of slides is relating to Capitol. And for this one, this is also very quick. There are only very, very small changes really in the Capitol expenditures by category for, which is operated by District Office, Facilities Planning and Development. And so if we go to the next slide, Elsa, this is where some of those minor changes came in. And really, it's a lot of shifting between the categories. So for instance, there's a small increase in roofing and paving, but there is a small decrease in athletic facility maintenance. So if you compare this schedule back to what you saw in February, you'll see some numbers go up and down, but there's nothing significant in those slides or in those changes. And with that, then also, we can go to the last slide, which is the next steps. And so this is really a reminder that for the April 25th Board Meeting, you will have first read of the actual fiscal year '24 budget schedule. So you will see more details around what you saw in those higher-level slides. And then May 23rd, we will have the truth in taxation and public hearing as well as budget adoption, where hopefully you all will adopt the budget for fiscal '24. And that is what I have. So what questions can I answer for all of you?
Wow, that's a lot of stuff.
Again.
As always, Ms. Grunio, thank you very much and it's very thorough. And your presentation, I believe, taps through the stuff that we don't understand to make, helping us understand. So thank you for that. Board members, this is our opportunity for the next short while to ask Ms. Grunio questions. So Ms. Butler, I think I'm going to start with you. Do you have any comments or questions?
I don't right this minute, but.
Got it. Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Thank you. I do have a few. On slide nine, on the general fund uses, again, on the compensation plan and marketing, a number is not listed for FY '23. Why is that?
Now I'm thinking on my toes, which, we'll see how well I do with this. It ends up getting included in the total expenditures in proposed fiscal year '24. That 738, I'm sorry, 738.1 million becomes the new total base expenditures. So we don't generally provide that comparative information from '23 to '24 because it becomes part of the new base in the next year. It's, that to me is the part that is very confusing about how we present a budget, if you will. But I can certainly pull together a schedule and send it out to you all that gives you that comparison.
Okay, thank you. On the auxiliary fund sources and uses, I think you've answered this question before, but would you refresh my memory as to what the tuition, where the tuition and fees are coming from that are under auxiliary?
Tuition and fees, so the biggest fee piece of that is course fees. That's all included in the auxiliary fund. And then tuition can be for non-credit courses. It can also be sometimes for contract tuition that we do that hits the auxiliary fund instead of the general fund. So that's really the biggest places would be non-credit and then really any contract activity that hits the auxiliary fund instead.
Thank you. You you did give that answer before. I'll try to remember it this time.
I'm just glad I was consistent. I'm just glad I was consistent.
And then just to comment on the Maricopa Corporate College. My memories can, could definitely be failing me. But I seem to remember that at the time that this was originally presented to the board, that the district commitment did have a time limit on it. And I gather from your comments that that has changed.
I, yes, so I remember that as well.
Okay.
For some reason, I think it was a five million dollar commitment, but I think I might actually be confusing that with.
It might have been five years.
I think it was five years because I think Rio National was a five year, a five million dollar commitment, so I'm getting my fives conflated. So yes, because I'm quite sure you remember, Dr. Thor, as do I, that that was supposed to be a revenue generating arm for Maricopa. I I think what I could say about it, and this is something that I know Darcy will be able to speak to much better, which is why I do recommend a work session where we can talk about more about what EMCOR does. Because as they were originally envisioned, I do not think, number one, that's how they've worked out. And number two, it's it's just really not where that group ended up going.
I see.
I, we heard a lot about State Farm, is what I remember in those years, and that was, I kept wondering, is that the only contract we have? But I think their work has really evolved into something a bit different than what it was originally envisioned, and I can't really speak to necessarily why. I also think that there have been a lot of leadership changes in all different places at Maricopa over EMCOR's tenure. But I do know for a fact that they are, a a big part of their work is to refer employers for credit courses to colleges. So when we first started looking at this a handful of years ago, and and I was beating the drum of, it was supposed to generate revenue, where's the revenue? Because where where do we get to pull that into the budget and have it be our, at the time, fourth revenue stream? I think at this point, it would be a third revenue stream, if we were lucky with it. And a lot of the conversation was around, but we're directing students for credit programs, and isn't that one of the things we should be doing, which I don't think was originally envisioned under the the initial plan? So I think it is an evolution that has definitely been good. And from my perspective, EMCOR, I think, needs to get credit for what they're generating in that credit space, even though those credit hours or those FTSE end up in getting included in college counts, for instance. So so I think it really becomes a conversation about the value that EMCOR adds to Maricopa as a whole versus how much revenue they're generating, which I think is a very different perspective than when EMCOR was launched, I think more than ten years ago now, so. And it's, it's seen a few different incarnations in its time.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Dr. Thor, any more questions? Dr. Norene?
No questions.
Okay, I'll move on. Mr. Burnett, do you have any comments or questions?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you for the presentation and for the information that I requested. I have two different kinds of questions. The first is on slide six, on the expenditure limit. Can you please unpack for me a little bit more that last bullet that said another internal option, but I heard you say not a preferable option, is exploring shifting applicable operational expenditures to excludable revenues? I don't quite follow that. Can you unpack that for me, please?
Certainly. So the the easiest one to pinpoint is Prop 207. So when it was passed by the voters, it included a provision that said any revenues generated by this are not subject to the expenditure limit. So that is twenty six, twenty seven million dollars a year that we get now, that is not subject to the limit. The purpose and intention of those funds are for workforce and STEM programs. We are not required under the legislation to have it be innovative use of funds. Prop 301 has a claim or has a disclaimer in it that it's to be used for innovation is the intention behind it. So that could allow us to repurpose some of those funds. So already, we pull five million dollars out for the the gap in the general fund, so that was started in fiscal twenty three. So there would be the option to repurpose more than that five million dollars. And so we would essentially take qualified expenditures out of the general funds, so STEM and workforce expenditures, and move them to Prop 207. What that means, though, is that we then don't get to use those funds on new workforce programs or new ideas that we have. So it it just ties our hands in a different way. And in an environment where that's where we expect and anticipate growth and the desire for innovation, it it wouldn't be the best option we have available to us, and I may put it this way, the most desirable option. So it's possible that we could do that for a shorter period of time to allow us to get to what might be, you know, more permanent or better resolution. So it just needs to be something that is on the table. I feel the need to to make sure that we understand and realize that that is an option available to us. Hope that's helpful.
Yes, I better understand that now. My next question is a bit vague, but I'm going to go for it. So I'm wondering if there have been any discussions about other revenue sources that that we haven't put on the table yet so far? And so I heard you say, for example, that slide seven has not changed from February and that we're projecting revenue, we've discussed before, we'll project flat enrollment, and then perhaps these will get adjusted as we see how bachelor's degrees go and that you're saying fiscal year twenty five, we may do differentiated tuition, but we want to see how that goes. But in addition, I'm wondering, are there other conversations that are also happening about other revenue sources? And it may not be that we need to get into all the details for this budget, but I think it would be helpful to know when will we start to see whether it be revenue from real estate and transactions as an example? And are we hoping that we start to see additional revenue lines in fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven? Where can we start to see those?
So the the chancellor does have a group that is working on that. Do you want to take a stab at that one?
Sure, thank you, Kim. President Sullivan, Ms. Smith, as as Ms. Grineau indicated, do we have a a group that's been working on it this past year? And it is one of my goals to create and identify new revenue sources for our system. The group has completed an inventory of the soft assets that are available and other opportunities where we may be able to, you know, monetize our our professional services and resources. We've got a number of content experts located throughout our our system and perhaps being able to provide services that, you know, we can charge for. Some of those things already happened through the corporate college, for example, but I don't know that we've ever lifted the rug and looked at this as a bigger opportunity. The other option is the real estate. We've got a, we've got a lot of real estate in Maricopa, not necessarily wanting to sell it off, but to repurpose some existing real estate. There's a lot of vacant rooms now that we have more remote work. And there's in, you know, there's interest, renewed interest again on looking at housing on our campuses. And I, and when I say that, I don't want to signify anybody that we're talking about a dorm experience, but we're talking about the the possibility of public-private partnerships. We've seen this happen with, at ASU over and over and over again. And that sort of, you know, housing arrangement could be for students, it could be for faculty and staff if they choose. It could be for people who live in an area that want to be located on a college campus and and engage with that college community. So we think that there's opportunity there to generate revenue, too. So those are the the highest level ones that we've immediately identified, and now we're beginning to dig a little bit deeper into what that means. There was a small group of us that had a meeting with Goodwill and their CEO and some members of their team, where we talked about some of these opportunities to rent space and to perhaps partnership on maybe one of these housing opportunities. But it's got, there's got to be a mutual benefit. Our, it's our students first and foremost, and then it's got to be a way for us to actually, you know, generate revenue while considering all of the risks that come associated with putting something like that on any of our college campuses. So a long-winded answer to your to your question, it's a yes, with more to come.
Great, thank you. And I will ask one more, and that is, just give me a second. On slide fifteen, on the Prop 301, I just wanted to make sure I understand that the estimated ending fund balance was, for fiscal year twenty three, for example, eleven point four, but then there were other than, basically, it seems like commitments were made for projects. And I'm just wondering, why do we account for it in that way? So and do those projects just fit into the five categories of the expenditures that are above it?
Yes, that's correct. So we can, when we do certain types of awards, I'll call them, they can be multi-year awards. So same thing in Prop 207 that we just did, we had about twelve, twelve point eight million that were awarded out for college proposals, and they run anywhere from two to three years. So we want to show what we believe the ending fund balance is going to be, but then we also need to show, but those have been committed already through whatever processes we have, whether it's an existing process or something that Workforce Funding Council puts into place. So we we don't want to show those funds as completely available, believing that they can be reused because we don't want to reuse it more than once. So we need to be very careful about that.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Davis?
Ms. Grineau, for the K-12 districts for their AEL expenditure limit, the Department of Ed gives them that number. I take it you have to come up with the number yourself.
So the number is actually calculated and provided to us by the Economic Estimates Commission. And so they start with that base in nineteen eighty and add in our population growth, which is our student growth, and then they add in the inflation factor, and they calculate out what that expenditure limit is. We'll get a preliminary a little bit earlier, and then we get a final a little bit later, once they've worked through all of their numbers, especially on inflation, this last time around, the difference between the preliminary and the final was the inflation factor. So yeah, so it is provided to us, but it is calculated also based on information we give to them. We provide them with the enrollment information. But we are, that enrollment data or that enrollment number is governed by statute. And so we have a couple of options available to us with which to use. And so for Maricopa, what has been the most advantageous for us, because that's the number we're going to use, is a rolling five-year average of FTSE. So that allows us to have a dip, you know, that that really can be leveled out over time and not have it be so impactful. Those changes were made, I want to say maybe two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. That was a legislative action that took place that gave us more than one single ability to provide a FTSE count, if you will.
And that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Ms. Bitter Smith?
Thank you, President Sullivan. Ms. Grineau, staying on the expenditure limit issue, Mrs., I I'm going to ask a generic sort of broad-bush roast question with no specifics necessarily, but I want to go back to the conversation that's happening, not just in Maricopa, but throughout the state with other districts. Can you share with the full board, I I think I know the answer, but I don't know that it's the current answer. Maricopa cannot be the only county, community college district that is challenged by this ongoing annualized, dual-annualized ELO legislative choice or doing something on the ballot. From the AC4 meeting, are there definitively other counties that need immediate help like we do?
I think that the most straightforward answer to that is immediate need, no. We are definitely the most immediate need. Now, saying that, we put together a schedule for AC4 to look at that really presented where all districts were in fiscal twenty two, because there was a whole lot of conversation going on and everybody's saying conflicting things. And so there's one district, and I won't say which district it was, who says, no, we don't have an expenditure limit problem at all. We use carry forward every year to stay under the limit, but we don't have an expenditure limit problem. And I just said, I think you have an expenditure limit problem if you're having to use carry forward every year to stay under the limit. So so Pima obviously has taken their their future into their own hands and did an election in twenty twenty to reset their base. And so they're probably pretty good, although they could still have issues, you know, maybe four, five, six years from now. There are other districts that are anywhere from two to four years out. I mean, what I would say is Maricopa is two to four, two years out. I wouldn't say two to four years out, but two years out, because twenty five, we really have an issue, and if something doesn't change, twenty six, we we really, really have an issue. So so I think we're probably on that same front. But what's funny is it's the expenditure limit issue seems to be something that can creep up on you and then smack you in the face, is kind of the easiest way I can put it. And I can say that because standing up in front of you, that's what happened to me. Because Pima's doing their stuff in twenty twenty, and we're like, oh, no, you know, everything's okay. And then low and behold, I look at something like this, and I'm like, oh, holy cow, this this is a gigantic problem for us. Pima had a similar realization just a few years earlier than we did. So my sense of it is that if that's how the two largest institutions are are going, I have a feeling there's going to be a few other ones that are going to run smack into that wall and then say, oh, holy cow, we really have a problem, too. That we really didn't understand what it was until you start to look at things in a different way. One thing I will say is I think all of this conversation is really having eight other districts dig into their stuff a lot more. Cochise is probably perfectly fine. I understand that they will never have an expenditure limit problem because of the base that they service quite and get a lot of their FTSE from. So I I don't think they're going to have an issue, which is just a whole different challenge for us. But Northland Pioneer, for instance, is one that I think is really going to run up against their limits sooner rather than later. So it it's a challenging thing, but it's such a weird concept. Concept maybe isn't so weird, but in practice, it's very strange. So to try to figure out where you really are seems to be very difficult.
Thank you.
Just a roundabout answer to your question.
No, but that that's exactly the kind of answer I'm looking for, because I understand that what I'm hearing anecdotally is many districts really haven't grappled with this as extensively as we are. So once again, we're in the lead trying to drive this conversation. Just one follow-up. As we move forward, and we we're in a timetable at the legislature, and then we certainly have this other larger conversation. If if it's on a larger to fix, what do we do, or what do we do for a long-term fix? What, is there any one, any other community college district in Arizona that is at least expressed currently at the time interested in doing some kind of ballot initiative, potentially maybe not statewide, but a companionship if Maricopa were to choose to do that?
I I don't know that that has been held in that kind of specificity. The last conversation was really around a statewide ballot item, but again, I I think we're challenged to figure out what the right answer is for a statewide ballot. The easy answer is repeal expenditure limit. I don't know how well that's going to pass, so if that's the basket we put all of our eggs in, I'm going to be really nervous. And there is going to be loud opposition to that, that we'll have to make sure our story is compelling enough to overcome the loud opposition. So I think that'll be a challenge. But so beyond that, it it's, I think, possibility of minor tweaks here and there. And we're talking about changing a constitution for minor tweaks at lots and lots of money. Don't know if that's really where we want to go either. So it might make more sense that if there are two or three or four districts that can come together and figure out, you know, similar messaging, because that's the other part of this. If that is the route we go, the message has to be very clear. And you guys can tell when we talk about this every single time, it's a, you know, and and how do we talk, how do we have this conversation about something that is as hard to understand as it is to explain and get people to understand and agree that this is the direction we need to go? And that it's not a free-for-all for Maricopa just to go out and, you know, raise property taxes to the hilt and, you know, spend everything over and over and over again. So it's it's a challenging message. So if there's a few districts that could get together and have similar messaging, that might be helpful.
President Sullivan, if I may weigh in.
Yes, I was going to ask for a follow-up. I know you were in a meeting, so please, go ahead.
Thank you, editor. President Sullivan, Mrs. Bitter Smith, at our last AC4 meeting where we discussed this, I I got clarity based on a question I asked on whether if we decided to pursue something on our own, would that impact in any way, interfere in any way if we were able to have, you know, an opportunity at the state level? And the answer that I got was no, because that, at a county level, we are only allowed to pursue capacity to to where we are now, and at the state level, we would be changing the constitutionality of the law itself. So I walked away from that feeling as if, then, you know, that, that took a lot of concern and worry for me that if we decided to pursue capacity on our own, that we can still continue to fight the fight at the state level to change some of the constitutional aspects of the law as it's currently written.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Both of you. Thank you.
Thank you. So I was going to ask Dr. Gonzalez to share what he just did. So thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. No, that's fine. So to that issue, I know often when we talk about the expenditure limit, people's eyes glaze over. And certainly with your guidance and support, the last few presentations, you've made that, I think, clearer for people, for us to understand. We do stand apart from the K-12 system. And I know often people want to throw us into the aggregate expenditure limit issue, which pairs us with them. And I believe that's still part of the conversation, if, if, part of the conversation with some of the legislatures. Legislature. So to that end, I know fitting in one more meeting is not everyone's interest. But I think it's probable that if we're going to look at and explore other options, we have a limited time within which to, to do that, given where this legislation, legislative session has gone. So board members, I, again, I know this is not your interest, but I believe if we are going to have to take some action, whether it's on our own or even in partnership with others, we need to understand specifically what are those actions and what kind of support do we feel is necessary to accomplish a positive outcome. I believe if we go forward and Ms. Grineau, maybe you and, I don't believe Lauren is in, oh, Darcy, you're here. Can help us understand the timeframe that we might have to address that. Could, could you help us understand our limited timeframe to look at options? Hi, Darcy.
Hi. Good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board. The, the limited timeframe is, is starting, the timeframe is starting to close in. And that's because of the conversations going on at the legislature. And what's happening in these leadership meetings, as Kim can, can attest to, is that the notion that Maricopa might think about helping itself has propelled support for us getting expenditure limitation relief for the next two years. Possibly one, but ideally two is what we're really pushing for. Because if we were hypothetically to go to a ballot in Maricopa County next election cycle in '24, the, the expenditure, the, the changes wouldn't kick in until '26, FY '26. So with that message, what's, what's happened is there's, it's generated a lot of additional interest in, from leadership, Republican leadership at the legislature to want to give us that relief. So there is, so we of course would never speak of this in terms of, in any way that would get us ahead of you all. But the notion that we would be thinking that this board would be contemplating the potential for us resetting our base and taking it to the voters is a very popular notion. So I think the timeline is closing. And if we could, if there were even a, a preliminary show of support from the board to that end or a conversation, I think it would go a long way. So I would say the timeline is in the next month or two, because that will really help us get this expenditure relief in place. And honestly, if you think about a timeline for a campaign, sooner rather than later is always good.
So thank you very much for that information. So Governing Board, we're not posted to talk about this issue any further outside of your presentation today. What I would like to do is meet with, you know, thinking about a calendar item for a deeper discussion with some specificity to what our next steps could be. And Dr. Gonzalez, I believe there's even been more information stirring with the AC4. So it would be great to make that part of, of any conversation. We'd have more of an update of your conversations with the remaining folks that you're visiting. Ms. Bittersmith, I know you convened the PAC Committee and perhaps we can hear that first in that committee and then you could work with me. And board members, are you amenable then to further, more immediate conversations? Okay, thank you. So we'll look further. So that may be a way for us to address that. I think you've made it clear that '25 is a critical year for us. So that will certainly impact our conversation also about our next options, which you have is Maricopa is exploring all options. So that could be one. So thank you. I don't have any question beyond what I've heard from others. Does anyone else have any questions this evening? Yes. Ms. Butler?
Thank you, President Sullivan. Thank you, Ms. Grineau. So I heard you say that if, back to the expenditure limitation, if in 2026, if no relief is provided, you said we will have a really, really big issue. Has anyone quantified what that, what, what would the cuts look like? What would that issue really, do we have a range or an idea of how bad, what that issue would be?
Well, so if we even look at the, the chart that's up above there, so it's about $80 million use of prior carry forward. So if we use all of our carry forward in fiscal '25 and potentially exceed it by, you know, anywhere between $2 and $10 million, then by the time we get to fiscal '26, we have no expenditure limit carry forward anymore, which means our budget cannot, our expenditure budget cannot be any more than what we're allowed under the expenditure limit. And our expenditure limit for fiscal, I don't have it up there, for fiscal '22, I believe, is somewhere around $450 million across all funds. The, the expenditure limit is not fund by fund, it is one fund. So we would need to go back and look at, and this is something I can pull together for whenever we meet again. Because I've been thinking about this too, that I need to kind of do that number gyration, if you will, to say, what would it really be? What would our maximum expenditures across the entire system be? If we looked at everything that's excludable and everything that is not excludable? So I'll have that number for you. But just going based on what I've seen already, I, I think it's $80 million is our challenge. And again, it's across all funds. So does that mean you cut the general fund by $80 million? Probably not. But we need to look at what we're spending in capital. Not everything we spend in capital is excludable. So there are certain requirements that things have to meet. So there are things that we can also do in that space where, and this may be something that, again, I was thinking about it the other day, I think we need to probably explore this one. Capital expenditure is related to equipment, so computers and servers. None of that is excludable under the limit. So what other jurisdictions have done is they have issued long-term debt and used financing to pay for those same things that they have cash in their door to pay for. But because they want to avoid the expenditure limit with that, they will then pay interest and finance those items instead. So I know Pima County does it on a regular basis. It's not a place where I want us to go, because I don't want us to pay a premium for our expenditures. But if we have no other option, that may be the option that will have to go down and our expenditures actually increase by the amount we're paying for financing. So, so those are the kinds of things that we'll really need to be looking at. And quite frankly, they might be something that we want to look at doing sooner rather than later anyway. So I have some data requests that I need to put out to find out, you know, exactly what we're spending on what and see if there's some options that will help us also between now and 2026. Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? A lot to contemplate. And Ms. Grineau, thank you very much for your presentation this evening. We appreciate it and thank you for your answers.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Dr. Gonzalez, do you have anything to add to this?
President Sullivan, thank you for the opportunity. I want to thank Kim and her team for putting this together and constantly being on top of it and vigilant around our resources and, and around this expenditure limitation. And one of the takeaways that I've had, especially through this legislative session, is that it's going to take a multi-pronged approach to solve the same issue through a three or four-year period on different fronts. So if it seems complicated, it really is complicated, even in how we're going to solve this problem.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. So essentially, the meeting and the purpose of our work session this evening is done. But I want to make an announcement before I drink, because I don't want you to go anywhere right now. I had the pleasure of being at one of the Artists of Promise. Oh, he's not singing. Artists of Promise concerts, meetings, there they are. So I and Dr. Norene were there and we were very impressed with the talent of all of the students that were there and their accomplishments. We were at Paradise Valley Community College, we were hosted by Dr. Hunter. And so, you know, thinking about students and showcasing our students, it came to us to invite one of the performers to be with us for this evening prior to our governing board meeting. So as you see, coming around the corner, we have us, our student, Mr. Nelson Flores, and he's going to be playing his guitar for us until we're ready to start the regular board meeting. Doesn't mean you have to stay seated, but I just wanted to give mention to him. I'm going to comment, Mr. Nelson is a student at Glendale Community College. He is a first-generation college student and is currently majoring in music performance. His goal as a musician is to express himself and touch people on an emotional level with his playing. And after listening to him, I can certainly tell you that he did. We, we commented how good he was and also how it made us feel. Mr. Nelson feels that as long as somebody is positively affected by his music, it acts as motivation for him to continue and strive for more. He states, if I can quote you, "All a person needs is a smile to make their day a little better, and I can be the person to provide that good feeling. Whether it's teaching or performing, I hope to reach people and become a source of motivation." Mr. Flores won first place in guitar performance at the Artists of Promise Gala that took place at Paradise Valley Community College on March 25, 2023. So he's here this evening to perform to, for us while we mill around before we start our official meeting at 6:30. So let's give him a round of applause to greet him. I can tell you he's outstanding. What did you perform? Again, I can't quite remember the piece.
So for the night of the concert, I performed a piece by a composer, a Paraguayan composer named Augustine Barrios. The piece was a romantic waltz called Opus Eight, Number Three. It's a very beautiful piece. As soon as you hear it, you just get the sensation of a waltz. Likely a sensation to dance, honestly.
Can't have a dance partner. No, it was a really beautiful piece. So thank you. So again, feel free to mill around, feel free to listen. But wanted to give showcase to another aspect of what community colleges do in Maricopa. It's far beyond sometimes the, what we talked about in Workforce Film and in others. But this is another element of who we are. So thank you for being with us this evening, Mr. Flores. And again, your, your music really touched us and we're delighted that, I'm delighted you're here this evening to perform. So with that, take it away for all of the time you need.
Thank you so much.
And I'm adjourning the agenda review. Thank you. I mean, work, work session. It's now 6:30, so I want to remind everyone that we're live captioning our meetings. So please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. So at this time, I'm going to call to order the regular meeting for, of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board for March 28, 2023. For the record, I will now call overall board members, Mr. Lynn Burnett.
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Bittersmith?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Butler?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Norene?
Present.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Thor?
Present.
Thank you. With my presence, all board members and our student trustee are present this evening. So again, I want to acknowledge our performer this evening, Mr. Flores. And I'd like to invite you to come to the podium and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. We can all stand.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Mr. Flores, for joining us. One more round of applause to this one. Good luck to you in the future. And I'm sure we'll be hearing about you on TikTok, social media, and anything else for your fine performance and, and your future in music. Thank you again. And thank you, Dr. Crawford and Anna, for bringing them here this evening. Thank you again. Great program. Bye. We do have some substitutions for this evening's meeting. We have Mr. Tony Asta here in place of Ms., Dr. Amy Diaz, president of Gateway. We also have Dr. Keisha Brock here in place of Ms. Bettina Sallos. We have Ms. Michelle Agostinelli, did I get that right? Here for Dr. Matt Reeves. And we have Dr. Bernadette Lamaza for Dr. Greg Peterson of Chandler Gilbert. We now start with our student life reports from Gateway Community College. So let's welcome them this evening. Their program is in student life and leadership. So I understand that we have a few students and their advisor, Ms. Washington here. I hope that's correct. And thank you very much for joining in this, us this evening. And would you please introduce yourself and your students?
Life and Leadership, oh. Did everybody get my first name? I'm so sorry. I do have a loud voice, but I'm trying not to yell. Good evening. My name is Ila Washington. I am the coordinator in Student Life and Leadership at Gateway Community College. And I would like to introduce the president of Student Leadership Council, Ms. Isabel Coram, who will give you the report.
President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC and guests. My name's Isabella Coram and I am president of Student Leadership Council at Gateway Community College and a block four nursing student. Next slide, please. So who is Student Leadership Council at Gateway? These are all of our members currently between the 2022 and 2023 semester. And so what do we do, next slide, please? What do we do at Student Leadership Council at Gateway? These are the fundamental concepts that students engage with as a member of Student Leadership Council. And here are some examples of them. In leadership, we've had a three-day student leadership retreat, which allowed us to network with students from across all of Maricopa County colleges who have similar interests, careers, and just being able to bond and really get that true college-to-college engagement. We did icebreakers, which allowed us to exemplify our authentic leadership roles. And we had keynote speakers that showed us the importance and the value of voting. We also were able to play team games that led us to work as a team and collaborate towards a goal. And as you guys all know, as most of the people in the room right now are teachers working, playing, and learning through play is a valuable source of education. Next slide, please. And so another leadership example was the club training. So all of the active clubs at Gateway Community College came to a training day. They all were given information on how to function properly as a club. We also, on this day, started the revitalization of Black Student Union, also known as BSU. They also were able to do tabling practice and get some critiques and really perfect their display. Next slide, please. So one of the events that we did in 2022 as a group was the Holiday Buffet that we hosted for faculty and staff. And so we really ignited on-campus activities again after COVID. And this taught us, a group, taught our group, action planning, budgeting, public stewardship and collaboration. Additionally, every first and third Tuesday of the month, we are able to volunteer at St. Mary's Food Bake on campus. And so that really gives an And so that really gives an accessible way for students to volunteer and get involved into the community. We've served 200, we serve 200 families per month, and that's totaling 5,000 individuals in September. Next slide, please. Another event that we had was Welcome Back Week. And so during Welcome Back, we were able to serve lunch and serve coffee in the mornings. Me and Jesse would actually roll around a cart and just say hello and make sure that we were the friendly faces on the ground, letting people, the new students and the returning students kind of round campus and give them a friendly welcome back. And so we served 380 students during that time. Next slide, please. So for leadership and events, we did a club expo. And so all of the active clubs that went to the club training, this was their time to really present their perfected tabling and give that involvement and student engagement opportunity for the campus climate. And so this is also the first tabling of the BSU. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And so the next one we have here is a volunteering and leadership opportunity that Chris and myself went to student, excuse me, we went to Scottsdale Community College. It was held there. It was a Gateway Administration Administrative Retreat. And we actually utilized the icebreakers and games that we learned in the three-day retreat, and we taught that to our administrative services team, and they were able to collaborate and organize themselves to reach a common goal through that icebreaker game that we played. Next slide, please. And so another leadership and event opportunity was the Maricopa Community College District Intercollegiate Leadership Conference. And so this was a follow-up to the three-day retreat. It was hosted at Gateway, and we got to hear our wonderful chancellor's story and how he rose to leadership. He also led us to define credibility, and then he allowed us to compare that, our own definition, to how he defines credibility and leadership. We wrapped that day up with a vision board and with two workshops with our very own dean, Dr. Ayala, on a couple different topics, declaring, clarifying expectations, practicing accountability, and sharing your passion. Next slide, please. So at the Day of Learning, this was a leadership and an opportunity for myself. As we all know, when you're a leader, sometimes you have to stick your neck out for your team for the greater good. So this day, I was centered around, this day was centered around the servingness of Gateway being a Hispanic-serving institute. So I went on panel and spoke about my experience and shed some light on campus climate. And for lack of a better word, there were some moments that I've experienced at Gateway that weren't so shiny and perfect. But I want to give credit for Gateway being innovative and allowing me that space to speak my truth and also them moving forward to track that and, you know, incorporate DEI to all platforms and students and serve that community fully. Next slide, please. And additionally, I got the great opportunity to work on the Presidential Search Committee. So no worries, everybody. My little picture here is blurred for confidentiality. You can't zoom in. You won't see nothing, I promise. So this was a leadership opportunity, and it showed that the shared governance that Gateway holds as a priority is true. You know, the importance of the voice of the student was there, and we were able to vote and give our insight. And it also gave me and the other student from Student Council who served insight on what is qualitative and quantitative responses when you're giving an interview, which is really key to me and her, especially because we're actually graduating this semester. Next slide, please. And last but not least, one way that we serve our community at Gecko in the Student Life Building, we have Gecko Groceries and Boutique. So this is a space where students can come and get formal clothing so that they can wear to interviews. They can also get some support with shelf-stable pantry items and hygiene items. Thank you for listening. If anyone has any questions or comments, now would be a great time for that. Thank you.
Mike.
Hi. Faculty Executive Council report. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of CEC, guests and colleagues. I am pleased to continue the work that I've been doing in sharing the great work that faculty do to support student completion, retention, and success. And as you know, I never like to present alone if I don't have to. So tonight, I am joined by Dr. Lisa Young. She is a faculty administrator for Open Education and Innovation, and she is here to talk to us about open educational resources in the classroom for students. Dr. Young.
Thank you, Camille. Good evening, Ms., so I'm so sorry. I've been practicing this.
Trust me. Thank you.
President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of the CEC, colleagues, friends, and guests. Thank you so much for being here, and I'm so excited to share the work that my colleagues, faculty across the district, have been doing for the last 10 years and the impact that they're making for our students. We have a project or initiative called Open Maricopa, and our mission is really aligned with facilitating the widespread use of open, low-cost, and no-cost materials, quality materials, to promote student success, textbook access, affordability, and increased access to our quality educational experiences for our students. I remember when I was in school, I would spend hundreds of dollars on books that I would barely crack open. Many of you might have those same memories. And so what we're trying to do is really get the best materials into the hands of our students so that they can learn and ensure that they can afford those books. Nationally, 70% of our students across the nation do not have textbooks on the first day of class, and 50% of them don't purchase them at all. And so as a faculty member, I assign readings. I expect my students to read those readings and come to class prepared. And if they can't afford the books because they're choosing, of course, to eat or pay rent or put gas in their car so they can come to campus, they're not learning as much as they really could be. If we could have the next slide, please. So open educational resources are course materials. They could be textbooks. They can be videos. They can be exams. They can be slide decks. They can be all of the different things that we use to teach our classes. And there's a type of copyright license, which is called an open license, and it's the magic of OER because it allows our faculty to customize those materials freely. They can take materials and mix them together. They can rewrite them. So I taught hydrology at Gateway for 15 years, and there were materials out there for winter, like for cold climate places, but nothing for the arid southwest. If OER had been in existence in the 90s when I was teaching those classes, I would have had really great materials. But my materials were not great because I was using what was available through the publishers. I can customize my materials using open educational resources specifically for my students, as do my colleagues across the district. We could have the next slide, please. However, OER isn't the answer for everything. Faculty, you know, have a lot of, they understand what they need to best serve our students. I'd like to turn it over to Camille.
Just a quick note that when we can, we want to use whatever materials are going to be affordable and accessible for our students. But we hire faculty for their expertise so that they can make those judgments about what materials will best serve students' needs and fulfill the learning outcomes. So sometimes, OER materials or open resource materials are not the best option, and the instructor needs that freedom to decide that that's the case. For example, we have a major's biology sequence of two courses. The textbook is expensive for that first semester, but then can be used the following semester, for the second semester of the course, and is used afterwards because the resources and the information in that textbook are essential for that student when they are doing the exams that they need to credential. In that case, that instructor is making the best choice to select that textbook rather than other materials. We need to make sure that we're not ever mandating use of any certain materials but relying on faculty expertise to determine what is the best situation for that course.
Thank you, Camille. And within that idea, there's a course materials affordable spectrum that you'll see a diagram of. And it goes from free to full price, and there are times that we need all of those things. And you'll see that there are zero textbook cost materials that are free with the exception, nothing is free. It takes faculty time, and faculty time costs money and their expertise. And so we definitely have to have the time for faculty to be able to create these materials. Our library materials, we pay for, but they are free to our students, which is, we have wonderful materials available to them. We also have looked at low-cost, low textbook cost materials. In about 2014, 2015, we polled our students across the district and asked them what low-cost textbooks means to them. We were the first institution in the nation to do anything like that. They came back and said $40. We really thought they were going to say 30. We said, "We hear you. $40 it is." And we, our students can now search our schedule by no-cost, low-cost materials, which are materials that are $40 or less. What's so interesting about this is that when we created our Schedule of Schedule Search and we came up with this $40, the rest of the nation followed suit, and Maricopa has been a leader with this work. If we could have, also in regards to that, there are open educational resources, these OER, these magic materials that I was kind of talking about that allow so many things to happen with learning. They can be free, but they could also, a print material can cost money. So I wanted to just underlie that in regard to why that crosses the spectrum, but it's a reduced cost from something that would be a publisher material because students can pretty much print to that cost. And then there is the inclusive access model, which some of you may have heard of, and that provides a baseline amount for textbooks from the publisher, but it's a little bit like what we did with cable. You know, we were like, "Oh, we don't want the high price of cable. I'm going to cut the cord, and I'm not going to have, you know, the big bill." But now we have HBO Max, and we have Netflix, and we have Apple, and we have all of these things that are kind of adding up, and we have to be careful about that. Inclusive access can be a really great tool for our students if used in a really good way, but if not, it could end up being like the streaming services. So just wanted to mention that to you. We're really excited about what's coming up in Spring '24. I mentioned that our searching of our student information system, that our students can search for those low-cost, no-cost materials. They were spending a tremendous amount of time mining our schedules. We found this out through focus groups, and so we were like, "Let's make this a little easier for you so you can use that time studying or working." And so we have now, instead of one definition of $40 or less, our no-cost, low-cost, we've now created three definitions so that our students can search for these. It's going to do a number of things. It's going to have more transparency for our students. It's also going to allow us to be able to, our Open Maricopa Initiative, to be able to better serve our faculty with professional development and growth in this area. And in the future, there are a lot of great things we can do with what we call open pedagogy, ways that we can leverage open assignments so students can create and share open resources. And they are basically able to share their thoughts and leave a legacy to other students and to the world about their learning, and in the future, that's going to be really valuable to our students. But here's the really exciting news. I'm so excited. I know some of you have already seen this. But we've been working really hard. Our faculty have been working really hard. And if we go to the next slide, you'll see that last fall, we saved our students over $3 million in course materials. So our students would have been spending that money on their textbooks, but they didn't have to because of the work our faculty did. So really excited about that. And I'm a founding member of this work here at Maricopa. I'm so proud of the work that our OER steering team has done. And on our next slide, you will see that our savings through Fall 2020, but if we just then jump to, there should be one more, we didn't get that to translate. Our savings in the last 10 years since we started the Maricopa Millions Project, which has emerged into the Open Maricopa Project, we've saved our students $30,386,800. And that's the work of our faculty.
Can you repeat that number again?
Certainly. It's $30,386,800. And that is a conservative savings amount. We're very conservative with the calculations.
Wow, very impressive.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yeah, Dr. Norini? No weeds, though. Okay, just.
No, I do really appreciate all the work that the faculty has done to lower the cost. Because I know one of the other ways that faculty have been lowering the cost is by going to eBooks. You know, and the eBooks has been very cost-saving to the students and then adding them to the fees so they come out right off the top. So I appreciate that. So one of the things that I've noticed with some of the eBooks and some of the publishers is that there's a price for one book, if you're just going to buy one book or you're just going to rent the one book, but then they have another price where you get all the books that you need. So is there a way that we can work it? So if one faculty, say a faculty in biology is requesting a book, an eBook, and then unbeknownst from one publisher, and then their sociology professor is asking for a book from the same publisher, instead of putting those two together, buying those two individually, they could put them together and get them at the one cost. Is there a way that we can help the students do that and save more money?
The bookstore has a number of different, I've had been in conversation with the bookstore, and they have a number of different models. There, from my understanding, we would need to see if we can do that cross-college as well as whether it's all books or just books for one course. So sometimes these inclusive access models are that you have to go in for all of the courses. So a student pays a flat fee but may be paying for materials that they're not actually using.
Okay.
So, but I think that there's a lot of opportunities for us to explore ways that we can leverage these things if our bookstore is amenable to that.
Yeah, because I know with some of ours, they're being incorporated in the course fee, so the student's paying for it already. And so if we can somehow leverage that so that they can get more books for a lower cost.
We'll definitely look into that.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Nori. Anyone else? Again, thank you very much for the presentation, and $30 million is pretty impressive. It certainly speaks to our vision and goal to be constantly student-focused, so thank you. Thank you for that, and thank you, Dr. Newton.
Thank you.
Now move to the adjunct faculty report. Mr. Frank Obik. Someday, I'm going to say that all well.
That's all right. No worries.
Try one more time.
Frank Obik. It was a gift from my father, so it keeps giving, and you only have to say it once. I have to say it all the time.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, President Sullivan, board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, friends, distinguished educators, Maricopa County. Thank you for your time. I appreciate you listening to me. As you can see, the title of my presentation is "Spring Breakdown of the Adjunct Faculty Employee Group's Current Initiatives." So spring break came and went, and I was surprised how quickly it went. But I noticed that they put four students down on our calendars. It said "Spring Break, Four Students" on everybody's calendar when they put it, and I don't know. I talked about changing that, but neither here nor there. Anyway, Adjunct Faculty Awards is next, next slide, thank you. Adjunct Faculty Awards is next. First, I wanted to say thank you to a couple of college presidents for helping out, particularly with Adjunct Faculty Awards. I want to say thank you to Dr. Hunter. Paradise Valley really stepped up and had a bunch of reservations, nominations for the awards, and so I think that is fantastic. I'd also like to thank Dr. Rivera, Dr. Smith, and Dr. Loschinsky, and Dr. Peterson, all of the folks there, their representatives from their institutions are just doing great and quick to volunteer with initiatives, and I think that's a sign of good engagement on their campuses, wanting to be, a sign of a well-run organization. So I want to say thank you for that very much. We did have over 120 nominations for Outstanding Faculty Awards. We did have over 120 nominations for Outstanding Faculty Awards. Now, the plans for the recognition banquet and ceremony are right on track. That's going to be in this room on April 28th, and I got to tell you, that's going to be a tough ticket to get, okay? So there, if you even have the opportunity to sign up for that event, they're not changing the name of Tempe to like Adjunct Faculty City or anything like that, but it is going to be a tough ticket. So if you get a chance to come, please, I would, there's 120 seats for 30 people that are being recognized, three from each college, and if you do the math on that, and everybody brings a guest, and we need some other people, it's going to be a tough ticket. So it's Friday, April 28th. If you get the chance to sign up, do it, you could probably sell the ticket. I mean, I don't think you should scalp it, but really, and there won't be tailgating until 2:00 in the afternoon outside. So, but that's right in this room, April 28th. I'll be out there. And I did have to say, all joking aside, MCLI has been just a pleasure to work with. Patricia Gillian and that crowd, it just, if you could have them involved with you on everything, you'd be better off. It's just been going smooth, what do you need? I really appreciate that. Thank you to them 100%. So that's right on track. Next slide, please. Adjunct Faculty Corner is going on. I have to thank Kelvin and Shannon for bringing us in on that. The second installment went to press in April. It doesn't sound, you know, like the second one is that great or anything, but we have that up and running, is what I wanted to point out. We're glad to be part of the service employee newsletter and have an engaging avenue to present our message to the MCCD community. As I said, last meeting, there's a lot of overlap between adjuncts and service faculty, so this is just a great way to coordinate, get the message out there without flooding people with a bunch of different newsletters they have to read. So that was just a stitch in time, and again, when people help you out for the betterment of the organization, even though you have more to gain than them, thank you very much for that. That's really showing that we're running on, we're running the right way there, so I appreciate that. Thank you for that. And then, next slide, please. The bylaws, we're still working on the bylaws. We're on schedule to meet our July deadline for that inception. We have about, I think, 45 minutes more of talking to go before we present it to the whole group, and that should happen in the next two weeks, and I'm really looking forward to that transition from association to employee group being complete with the establishment of those bylaws, and that'll be that time schedule, and that one's going to happen. So, not going to, again, next slide, please. Elections are coming up, too. We're currently in an election cycle. We're, we have nominations for the vice presidents out. Elections have been very robust in the number of candidates who have decided to run for each position. I appreciate everybody hyping that up, too. Dr. Diaz helped that out, Dr. Britt helped us out with that, and we've had a lot of people running, but unfortunately, we want to improve turning out the vote, and that's my, wow, I can't believe it, that's, I'm raising an egg, I gotta, I'm incubating some goose eggs, and it's time to turn them, but, and I'm terrified, as a goose mom, I'm not doing that great, I got to tell you, that's like five things I'm terrible at, and turning off my phone.
You're giving me goosebumps.
So, yeah, and while it lays golden eggs, I'll get back to you, so, anyway, I got six, and well, that's, let's, none of them are running for adjunct faculty positions at all. Our summer planning committee, though, is trying to improve on turning out the vote. Where we've seen, we've seen a lot of people running, and that's great, and people are, you know, excited, and they want to step up, but what I would like is the summer planning committee to prioritize this, and to say, how can we get a little bit more people voting back out? So that's one of our initiatives, that's one of the places where we really want to improve. Next slide, please. And I don't know if you've heard me say, adjuncts are a deep pool of talent who have already proven their dedication to this organization. They're reliable workers who earnestly advance the interests of MCCD, and we're always looking for more opportunities to get involved and to further the mission of this organization. I hope you'll let our track record stand for itself when you consider who you want to involve further in the MCCD community and family. So thank you so much, and if you have any questions, entertain them now.
Besides how to raise goose.
Don't ask me, no, I'm not the guy to ask someone else. That's the best advice I can give you.
I don't mean to be flippant. Thank you for your dedication and your work to the adjunct faculty piece, and I know we'll be looking at the new framework for your employee group, so we'll look forward to getting that. When, do you know?
Very soon. I think that at the April meeting of our board, we'll have that, we got to run it by administration, and then we got to run it by our board guys, you know, like our guys all have to be, and then it should be, all I can say is by July 1st, those will be enacted and will be operating under those particular guidelines. So sooner rather than later, absolutely for sure.
We'll look forward to that, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and good luck with the eggs.
Right.
Thank you. Now we'll move to staff representation update. Again, we have Ms. Shannon Monje and Mr. Kelvin DeVal. Good evening.
Good evening, President Sullivan, board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC members, colleagues, and guests. My name is Kelvin DeVal. I am the co-president of staff representation, and I will start beginning a report out. Next slide, please. I would like to start by welcoming who is here today, the next co-president-elect, coming from Mesa Community College, starting at administrative coordinator, representing non-exempt, She will be starting July 1, and will have the task of attempting to replace Ms. Shannon Monje. Next slide, please. We want to highlight the convocations that are coming up. We have a lot of staff right now doing a lot of planning for this, and I'm sure many of you have received invitations. Coming the first week of May, we will be doing multiple convocations throughout Maricopa. You can go to the URL that's on the slide, and you can see the dates and times they're going to be throughout many different colleges, convention centers. It's an amazing week. If you have the opportunity, please go to several of them. The experiences are amazing, and we are really looking forward to them as we are planning very diligently, both staff and faculty and adjunct, to get these up and going, and we are currently at a very good pace, and we're about done planning pretty soon here. So I highly recommend attending as many as you can.
Hi, I'm Shannon Monje, I'm the other co-president for staff representation. You haven't got rid of me yet, you have me till June 30. So we want to give a big shout out and congratulations to Dr. Britt, who has won the Phi Theta Kappa Paragon Award. She will be receiving her Paragon Award when the Society of Community College Honored Students Phi Theta Kappa recognizes the 28 college presidents across the United States at the Society's annual convention in April. Dr. Britt, thank you for everything you do for our students. We know you are championing Phoenix College, but we know you help students all across the district, so thank you for everything that you have done. Next slide, please. We'd like to highlight the Got Purpose presentation that's happening on Friday, March 31st, from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. You see the QR code on your screen, you can still sign up and register it as a virtual presentation, or you can contact Dr. Anzizuki or Andrea Sheer, who is helping put this event together. Their contact information is on the slide. I have been part of this coalition for over a year now, and it is just, it's given me more than saying, why are you, your purpose of coming to work is to pay your bills? No, your purpose from work is serving the students, but in what capacity? What do you want to do? What does Maricopa mean to you? What does your students mean to you? What is your why? So there's going to be a lot of great breakout sessions, presentations on grit, purpose, why, cultivating it, service learning, et cetera. So I highly encourage those across the district to sign up and listen in on these sessions. Faculty, there's three hours of FPG available, and I recommend contacting your faculty reps because that's all I know about FPG. Next slide, please. We would like to highlight our Glendale Community College reps. We have Sabra Greisman, who is our senator for non-exempt on, at Glendale's campus. We also have James Morris, Mary Beltran, and Willie Jackson, our non-exempt reps and our sworn officer. Next slide, please. We have Jackie Serna, Angie Acuna, and Rico Morton, who are exempt representatives at Glendale. Kelvin and I are privileged to work with them consistently on representation issues, not only at Glendale, but across the district. They are strong reps, and Glendale, you are so, so very lucky. Next slide, please. If you have any questions, let us know, and just a small plug, staff that are listening, please self-nominate to become the next rep for your campus and across the district. We need your voices heard.
I want to acknowledge that we have no awards for this evening, other than for me to say thank you all for doing a great job. And then, moving to the chancellor report, Dr. Gonzalez.
As President Sullivan, members of the board, CEC, and guests that are with us this evening, a few items to update you on. In our Week 10 of 2023 spring enrollment, head count is up 3.5%, and FTSE is up 5.4%. We have started summer and fall registration now, roughly three weeks into that, and all I've got to report at this point is head count numbers with FTSE coming later, my head count is up 4.3% for the summer and 1.7% for the fall, very early still. So the good news is that we're on the positive side when compared to this time last year. After just a few short weeks, our students' interest in Maricopa bachelor's degrees continues. We have 548 entering students, which means that they've expressed an interest. 383 of those students are now ready to enroll, and since then, 156 students are actually enrolled in courses associated with our seven bachelor's degrees throughout the system. That's a 28% conversion rate, and of course, we are doing some things to work with, to continue to bring students to the bachelor's degree, but also to continue to work with those students that are somewhere in that pipeline to get them to enrollment. So that's, there are a number of things that we're doing there for that. In one of Dr. Brock's recent internal reports that she provides around enrollment, there was a report that was shared by Gallup and Lumina Foundation that recently report some of the, some of the things that happen in higher education with our black students. And in fact, the title of the report was called "Balancing Act: The Tradeoffs and Challenges Facing Black Students in Higher Education." The report highlights two major challenges of the black student population in completing the degree or certificate program, where two things were highlighted. One, black students often feel discriminated against or unsafe in some of their certificate, associate degree, and bachelor's degrees pursuing programs, and many black bachelor's degree students are forced to balance studies with other duties. And what that translates to is that black bachelor's degree students are twice as likely as other bachelor's students to have additional responsibilities as caregivers or full-time workers. It's 36% versus 18%. So coincidentally, just before spring break, I had a meeting with Dr. Keith Curry, who is the president of Compton Community College in the LA area. After learning more about his idea to form an alliance for black learner excellence, I committed our system to join the launch of this effort with several other key colleges and systems from around the US, such as Dallas College, Cuyahoga Community College, also known as TRICY, and others that are planning on focusing on closing the gaps for this population. Because our black and Latino males were most impacted by the pandemic, I suggested that after successfully launching this alliance, we consider expanding a focus to our other students of color. At Maricopa, we are working each day to close any and all equity gaps amongst all of our students across Maricopa. So more to come on that, and it's exciting to be a part of something that could, you know, have some far-reaching tentacles. When you get Maricopa, Dallas, and the TRICY involved, those are some major systems involved and some important work there. Legislatively, we heard a lot of talk earlier about the expenditure limitation, and the session is nearing the end of scheduled hearings, with only one more week of bills to pass for consideration by the full body. Our government relations team is working with AC4 on strategy to ensure the needed expenditure limitation penalty reprieve is part of the budget, and has secured support from key legislators in support of that effort, as was shared earlier by Ms. Darcy Renfro. Our dual enrollment bill, Senate Bill 1717, sponsored by Senator Kaiser, and backed by the Greater Phoenix Chamber and Helios Foundation, was passed out of the Senate and awaits a hearing in the House. AC4 has renewed focus on determining a long-term solution for expenditure limitation challenges. Convenient a meeting last week, to which you all heard about earlier, where we are discussing possible solutions and pathways to solving this problem in the immediate, the intermediate future, and of course, the long-term future. Our foundation has been very busy and has experienced some success. We were recently informed that the Virginia, excuse me, Virginia Piper Trust has awarded the Maricopa system $3 million to focus on expanding and scaling our LPN programs across three colleges. Those three colleges are Gateway, Glendale, and Mesa. So I want to thank Brian and his team and those colleges, the presidents and the staff who worked closely to put together this proposal. It was something that has been worked on for some time, and we had multiple meetings with Piper. We had follow-up interviews with Piper, and in the end, we prevailed, and we, again, I congratulate the team, and we thank the Piper Trust for their trust in Maricopa. You can clap. And the City of Phoenix Promise effort that has been underway this semester with the foundation has reached over 800, or excuse me, 819 students. Where over 70% of those students are first-generation students, so that's also very exciting work. And, you know, I just want to say that we're on the home stretch of the academic semester. This time will fly by, it's a very exciting time for Maricopa, where we have a number of convocations, local galas, local award ceremonies for students that do exceptionally well, and then, of course, we have commencements across the system. So I'm really looking forward to this time. I slept as much as I could during spring break in preparation for the long haul, and so here we go. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. That concludes my remarks.
You're welcome. Thank you, chancellor. Lot of, lot going on, as you said. It's hard to look at your calendar and not find something on it, right? Anyway, thank you. We're moving on to citizens interim, and I want to remind everyone, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the governing board. In compliance with the open meeting law, the governing board will not be able to discuss nor, or take action on issues raised during this portion of the agenda. When necessary, we will address these in different forums. Want to remind presenters this evening that you're timed at three minutes for your presentation to the board. So with that, I'd like to call Ms. Pleasant to the podium for this evening's first citizens interim speaking. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam President, Chancellor Gonzalez, governing board members, CEC, family, and friends. My name is LaWan Pleasant, and I used to be an employee here with the Maricopa Community Colleges in the Gateway. Actually, I worked for Gateway, I worked for Rio Salado, I worked for the Maricopa Contact Center in a number of capacities. I stand before you, this is the fourth year I've stood before you, letting you know that we fail when you fail to adhere to our own policy and procedures. My right to protected activity was violated when my supervisor struck me and I filed a complaint of discrimination slash retaliation. Dr. Derek Hall preceded that investigation. The governing board, chancellor, I don't know who it was, but they hired another law firm, Stacy Gabriel, to conduct this fact-finding supposedly investigation. Was supposed to be a 90-day evaluation, took 187 days. No one ever contacted me to say, hey, Ms. Pleasant, I apologize, nothing. So we want to get back to the truth, transparency, and integrity. I've stood before you, I've gathered documents from your own records. I've been working directly with your, and I'm a little nervous right now because I'm pretty upset about this. Dr. Gonzalez, please look at me, sir, because I'm speaking to you, and I'm speaking to you, Dr. Georgiana Kelly. You all know what happened. I've got records that know, because I requested this information from your ombudsman's office, and I've recently received confirmation that you paid Stacy Gabriel over $50,000 for five months of investigative reporting. In this information that I received through the ombudsman's office, it also identified that Laura Marigway, who's the employee who had struck me, had lied during the investigation. None of that was disclosed to me during the invest, none of it. The chancellor knew, but I guess she knew because you wanted her to stay on for the next four years. I see that she just recently retired last month. I don't know how many years that she's been here, but my next request for the ombudsman's office, and I know that Ms. Teresa Tony is going to be retiring soon, I'm going to be making a request for public records for Laura Marigway, because I know she's got a history. There were other, two other employees within the same team who filed their complaints. They were not terminated right away. They were allowed to stay unpaid leave until after the investigation, but when I filed mine, I was terminated less than 10 days with no, with no investigation. So I know that my time is up, Madam President, but I'll be coming to you every month, you will see me every month until we get some type of resolve, and thank you, Ms. Faulkner for taking the information that I forwarded to you as well. Thank you, that's my time.
Ms. Pleasant, I do want to say that Ms. Ms. Pleasant, I do want to say that in the future, during citizens interim, we would require you not to make attack comments about individuals. You can speak to your concern and your interests, but we do need respect for silence on the the people that you want to call out.
Well, I I apologize, but I'm speaking the truth.
I I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, other than I would like you to refrain from.
From saying a name?
Saying names.
Why can't say a name?
Not if it's in any uncivil or harassment way.
Was that uncivil by saying?
There was an element of that. So in the future, please, please.
I just want to say, right, so I can't say that she hit me with the fact that's what the investigation was.
The name is is the issue.
Oh, the name is the issue.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our second citizens interim speaking request is from Ms. Marta Williams, and she'd like to speak to out-of-state tuition for incarcerated students. Ms. Williams? And also, I'd like to remind you, we have a three-minute speaking.
Excuse me? The three minutes?
Three minutes.
Okay.
And welcome.
Thank you. Hi, Presidents Sullivan and members of the board and Chancellor Gonzalez. So I originally came up here to speak about the tuition raise, how it's like raised like almost three times of the of the in-state tuition for incarcerated students. But when I came here and saw the expenditure report, and just to give a little background, I have been a productivity lead since I was 17 years old for a Fortune 500 company. Then, when I was 19, I became a payroll analyst and HR liaison for another Fortune 500 company. And I've also helped countless nonprofits go from being closed or about to close to like actually making revenue so then they can keep their keep their dream alive. So something that I noticed is that, in my drive, I don't have like all of the access to your expenditure report. But something that I noticed, and this with all due respect, is that instead of getting honey from the hive, you guys are kind of getting honey from the pot. And then the pot will want, it it will run dry eventually. So you guys are sitting on a lot of money, like a lot of money. When I was looking at the the expenditure report, I was like, dang, like, I wonder why they're not seeing these options. And then I know I'm seeing them just because I have, you know, over over a decade of that of that type of experience. So I see why you guys raise the tuition, but with all due respect, that is not sustainable for the future, for the long term, just because this is a business, colleges are businesses, and sometimes people look at them as if they are not. And that's just not true, and money needs to be flown. And then also to the Bureau of Statistics with like job openings and stuff, you guys have a lot of ways to to get a lot of revenue. And so that's just kind of all I wanted to say, so, because I see why now that the prices were raised. I was talking to the to the team from the incarcerated, and they were like, oh, just go to a meeting, you know, because they raised the price and talked about it. I was like, oh, here, I'm gonna talk about it. And then when I got up here and I was just like, I see why. But just so you guys know, that's not sustainable for the future. Your honey pot's gonna run dry. You gotta, you gotta get into the hive. And you guys have a lot of money that you're kind of sitting on and a lot of access to money and a lot of access to particular demographics that I saw wasn't mentioned that you could mention. And so I'm gonna come back again one day and like do my whole spiel about the incarcerated things. But when I saw it, I just don't feel like it's reasonable at this moment, just because I see what you guys are trying to do. So maybe later on, you know, once like the funding gets a little bit better, then maybe I can come back and talk about it. But I feel like that's also a way that, with all due respect, you might be shooting yourself in the foot a little bit with the out-of-state tuition. And you have a lot, you have a huge market in the out-of-state tuition, especially the incarcerated population. So it'd serve you best to, well, my time is up anyway. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, and you're certainly welcome to come back anytime. Moving off of citizens interim, then, we're now going to move to consideration of our consent agenda. Do any members or the chancellor wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Being none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Shall move. Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Bitter Smith. Is there any discussion on the motion? Oh, there can't be any discussion on the motion, sorry. So all those in favor of supporting the consent agenda as presented, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda passes by a vote of 7-0, and that included with our student trustee also voting aye. We're now moving to non-consent action items. There is an item for approval this evening, and that is our second read and approval of the proposed Maricopa Community College District Strategic Plan going into effect on July 1, 2023. Are there any comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve the MCCD strategic plan effective July 1, 2023?
Shall move.
Dr. Newey, thank you. Is there a second?
I will second it, but with a quick comment. I just want to commend the team for all of the work, rapid-fire work that we did not think was possible in the time period to get it done. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for you, thank you for your second on the motion. Is there any other comment or discussion during this time?
President Sullivan?
Yes, Dr. Thor?
I want to, I'm looking at the slide deck. I want to be sure that the vision statement we're voting on is excellence in education for a better world versus forge a better world through excellence in education.
Yes, Dr. Newton, could you clarify that for us under discussion, please?
Yes, sorry, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, everybody else. Yes, as a matter of fact, what happened was we got feedback, and as a result of that feedback, changes were made to that vision statement so that it is as you see it in front of you. Excellence in education for a better world, seven words fits on a T-shirt, coming soon after you approve it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Dr. Thor?
Assuming this is going to pass.
Go ahead.
I want to clarify that as chair of the policy committee, I should now work with Ms. Macias to bring for first reading the new vision, mission, values and strategic priorities to replace the board outcomes.
That is correct, and you and I believe Ms. Smith have some attention to be paid to the policies to ensure we're completely aligned as that moves forward. So that's some of our work, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Board members, any other comments or? Okay, I'm just gonna say it, yay, even though we haven't voted yet, okay?
I'm waiting.
But that was my discussion. How many years? I'm looking at you. So, anyway, Mr. Speaker, where we had that conversation. All right, no other discussion or comment? I'm going to ask all in favor, please vote by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries with the unanimous vote, including our student trustee, yay. And Ms. Bitter Smith, your statement was certainly much more professional than my yay. But I believe that, thank you for your comments on that. Yes, I remember, Dr. Gonzalez, when we talked about this was it and had to happen. And there were times when it went just a little bit slower than we want it, but here we are. So and now there's lots of work for all of you to do, so, including us. So congratulations, and I'm so glad that has gone forward. We're now at the first read of the proposed fiscal year 2324 residential faculty agreement, effective also in July 1, 2023. Are there any comments or questions on the first read of this proposed agreement? All right, being none, we'll move forward into our second item. Any comments or questions on the employment and separations report from January 21, 23 through February 17, 2023? Be no comments or questions, I'm going to move on. But I do want to say to those of you who are who were present this evening in support of the residential faculty agreement, thank you for being here. We will have a second reading and vote at the next meeting, and I know you've put a lot of work into that. So thank you for that. Moving forward into monitoring reports, we have the budget analysis report for Fund One, general unrestricted fund for the seven months ending January 31, 2023. Are there any comments or questions? Being none, I'm going to ask for community reports. Mr. Burnett, do you have anything to report?
I'll try to keep it brief. I basically spend the majority of my time. I noticed a lot of the board members attend a lot of functions. I don't know how you get all this stuff done between meetings, but you seem to be everywhere, doing everything all the time at once. So I figured I better get busy and start doing some stuff. But I did, I did try to get a lot done in the first quarter, January, February, toured all the, toured, not all, four of the campuses, Paradise Valley, Scottsdale, CGCC, and then Gateway. Realized they're a lot bigger than I thought they were, and there's a lot more to them. And the more you get into the campuses, the deeper you go, the the more stuff you see. It's really good, especially students. Attended the student senate meetings for the the first quarter. I attended each one of the student senate meetings for January, February and March. Very interesting meetings. They're all virtual, which hopefully that'll change next quarter or next semester, and we'll start getting back to in-person meetings, because I think that needs to happen for the student senate, just to note there. But they they're doing some good work, and I think you're gonna see tremendous stuff in the last three months. Maybe not you personally, but as your presidents, vice presidents and deans that are here, I think you'll see a lot more from your student senate than in the the next three months than you did in the first nine. Attended a couple of club fairs at different campuses, multiple board strategic planning meetings. For some reason, the board president wanted me there. I don't know why, because you guys did all the work. You guys in the street, the street planning committee, just phenomenal, watching that brain trust at work, putting things together for the long term. It's it's as an adult and as a student both, it's it's great to see you guys working on behalf of students who probably haven't met and will be coming back here, sitting on this board one day. So that that was awesome. Attended the etiquette dinner, watching a bunch of young people try to figure out which fork to use and which knife to use, which is a skill that our parents don't teach us. So it's great that we have a college system that does things like that to teach young people how to operate properly and in those type of environments, because sometimes it means the difference between a job offer and not for some people. So it was it was good to see that, and a bunch of young people putting it together. So that was, that was great to attend. I I I took the month of February, and I wanted to do this every month. I didn't get a chance to do it in March, but I have a a goal of of, I have a litany of questions that I have posed, and I I want to get to 100 students every month with this list of questions, just asking them. It's eight or 10 questions that I ask, just to get some, a general feel for where the student body is. And I know 100 is is a small number in comparison to the number we have across the district, but it still gives me some general feedback on what students are thinking. I try to hit all different races, groups, ages, genders. Because it gives me a good feel when I sit here at the board, I hear things that are being talked about, and I hear the things that the students are talking about. Attended the CGCC Advisory Council meeting, and then immediately afterwards went to, which was really interesting. Again, mostly students, club leaders, presidents of the clubs and the student body president. And then immediately afterwards, the meeting with the president, Greg Peterson, all of his deans, all of his vice presidents, and all the student leadership. I think that was the most fun the president had that day, was sitting there talking to students. And I know you guys sit in a ton of meetings, and I and I know that when you get the opportunities to get around students, it's probably the best time for you. You probably enjoy that just as much as as the students enjoy being around the leadership. So it's a good interaction, and I would just say continue, continue working on that or continue to do that. And then probably the highlight of my quarter was getting to do the town hall with Dr. Gonzalez and peppering him, peppering him with questions. He had no idea what was coming, no agenda in front of him. He just sat there, opened himself up in front of an entire student body at Australia Mountain, and I thought it was probably one of the most fantastic things I've seen between staff, faculty and student interaction. He did a fantastic job. I actually did, one of my papers in my comm class was evaluating speakers. So I figured he's speaking, might as well evaluate him. So he's got an evaluation coming. And you might want to reconsider that that position after we see this evaluation, because it's pretty thorough. It's pretty thorough. You did a fantastic job, absolutely. So that's my, that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. How's flying?
Excellent. It's, weather's good now, so no bumps. It's doing a lot of cross countries, Mexico, New Mexico, California, up to Colorado and back. And by myself, a lot of solos now. So I'm in that phase where I'm just doing commercial maneuvers and cross-country flying.
They'll be careful out there.
It's going well. It's going well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Through update. Ms. Smith?
No report this month. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
So Ms. Butler and I are the dynamic duo, and we are on the community college, the community college tour circuit, and you should join us, Mr. Burnett.
Done.
We can be the triple threat.
Done.
No, 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 I think that's really dangerous.
We can fly from campus to campus.
What do you think of that, Ms. Butler?
So she's speechless.
Our first visit was to Australia Mountain Community College. Thank you, Dr. Rivera, for hosting us. I think they were really anxious and anxious to get rid of me because I'm the questioner. So I asked about a billion questions. And then we went to the animal ambassador program, and I got to hold snakes and tarantulas. And I got pictures of them so that I could impress my grandsons with holding snakes and tarantulas. And then we went to the Maker Space, and they had all this equipment that I don't even, you know, they didn't have those kinds of things when I was growing up and in college. So so it was a wonderful visit. And then we went to visit Dr. Hunter over at Paradise Valley. And we rode in a in a new golf cart that was very spacious, and we had a great time, and we saw a lot of stuff. We went to the student union, we went to the health, one of the health classes. We went to a music theory class. We dropped into a music theory class. So so that was amazing, too. So those were our two college visits. We have one Friday with you, Dr. Lara, at Glendale, so we're looking forward to that. And we have other ones, and I don't remember what they all are. But and then the other thing I wanted to report is that I listened to our chancellor do a podcast for the chamber that was wonderful. And I'm so glad that I listened to that. And the other thing is I saw an article in the Arizona Republic that he wrote about our nursing program. And so I'm so glad to see when we're out in front in the public like that, it really does my heart good. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Lots going on. Ms. Bitter Smith?
Thank you, President Sullivan. I had the pleasure of joining several board members and the chancellor and some of our staff team at the League of Innovation Dinner as part of a larger conference. That was educational for me, about some broader scope of people. Dr. Thor, I now understand why the League of Innovation exists, and so I thank you for that exposure. I'm headed to, with other board members, to the AGB Conference for another learning experience for a few days to continue to expand the knowledge. And I do want to tell the the rest of the room that last month I asked about our bachelor's degrees. I want you to know I've had unsolicited phone calls and emails from people, some of whom I don't know, who are uniformly excited. One at one parent actually called and said, I think my son is lying to me. This can't be possible. But I had to assure her that, yes, your son is not lying. There are an opportunity now to enroll in a bachelor's degree program through the Maricopa Community College District System. So that that is is very exciting when we have people paying attention to the marketing program we're doing, but also all the work that went into making those things happen. And so that I think is exciting for all of us. And that is my report.
Thank you. Dr. Norene?
Thank you. I was really humbled to ask to come speak to the statewide PTK, really, because if you've seen my transcript, it was the closest I would get to PTK. I was intimidated. There were a lot of smart people in that room. I I also went to the dinner for the League of Innovation. And as Ms. Sullivan said earlier, the artists of promise at Paradise Valley, which was outstanding. Then I also attended the Gecko Legacy Reception Four at Gateway. And then. And then just this afternoon, Gateway had an open house for their trades that I, I went to, and I got to tour the welding, the meat cutting, the auto body and the electrical programs that they had there. So that was really interesting time. And I too will be going to San Diego for the AGB Conference. That's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Newey. Dr. Thor?
Well, it's already been mentioned by, along with Mrs. Sullivan, attended the Maricopa hosted dinner for the League for Innovation board members and representatives. And having been a member of the League Board while I was chancellor of Foothill Deanza, it was kind of old home week for me. So I enjoyed that dinner very much. I also had the opportunity to attend one day of the League for Innovations, Innovations Conference, which was hosted by Maricopa at the Tempe Mission Palms. And it was really very well-attended and a very informative conference, and I was proud of Maricopa for being the host. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Butler.
Thank you. Ms. Davis did a wonderful job describing our visits, and I just want to thank again Dr. Rivera and Dr. Hunter for rolling out the red carpet for us. And it was just, it's so inspiring and fun to see the campuses in person. So thank you.
Thank you. So it's my turn. So spring break happened, and I actually didn't have meetings every day. So I thought that was kind of refreshing for a change. But anyway, I'm sure and I hope all of you had good spring breaks. There are a lot of things that I've attended, many meetings, phone conversations, et cetera, but there are a few things that stand out. You obviously recognize that I was very impressed with the Artist of Promise event. And there's another one coming up on April 18. And instead of music and dance and vocals, they'll be doing creative reading, drama, others. There's also a fashion show, I understand. So just note that for April 18. I also had a fun experience affiliated with Scottsdale Community College and Junior Achievement, and I got a certificate. This is an opportunity for elementary, junior high students to be introduced to community colleges by identifying a workforce path for themselves or a goal that they want to achieve. And Julie Steak very quickly took me through all the steps, but I, this is signed by Dr. Lashinsky, so this is now going in my profile because I got to go through all the steps, too. But I find that a very exciting opportunity for younger people to be introduced to the community college system and how it can help them move forward to their life's goals. So congratulations to Scottsdale for doing that. I attended the Gateway Gecko Legacy Event, very ambitious plan to generate support in the philanthropy sector. Ms. Smith, I think you'd be really interested in what they're doing there. And certainly, they're setting, again, a path to begin to generate funds to support students in new ways. So I found that very exciting. I also did the League of Innovations Dinner, which you've heard, but I was also a presenter, and I did that with a former employee of the Community College District, Ms. Sukater, or Dr. Sukater, some of you may know. But the interesting thing was, she was presenting the initial findings of a national survey for student trustees, trustees of governing boards, community college governing boards. The, the statistics are early, but I found it very interesting to see the breadth of commitment of board members as one of they, as they responded to the question of how much time do you spend as a governing board member? Well, my answer was, you know, off the charts, not really. But there were some people who said two hours a month, and others who said four hours a month. Very perplexing to me, because I can tell you that every single person I serve with on this governing board spends far more time being invested and contributing to the success of this district. So just wanted to call that out. And I think there's more to come in that area. Anyway, there's, I'm going to, with my colleagues, going to the San Diego AGB. That stands for the Association of Governing Boards. And we're going because there is higher institution learning beyond what we receive in the general community college sphere. So I think we'll be hearing more about what's best practice in, as governing board or trustee members in the broader sphere. We'll be able to bring some of that back so that we can constantly be focused on doing a better job on behalf of all of you, and particularly our students in, in leading the district. So with that, I wish all of you a very good night. Thank you for being part of a long session with the work session and others. Keep the "We Are Family" song in your heart and mind. And with that, drive safely home. Good night.